All right, good evening. My name is Ani Minavkian. I am the president and CEO of the Montebello Chamber of Commerce and Industry. Thank you for joining us for the 2020 Montebello City Council Candidate Forum, organized by the Chamber's Government Affairs Committee. Tonight's forum is being livestreamed on Facebook, and a recording of this event will be immediately posted on our Facebook page so that residents can view it and access it long after the event is finished. For those who don't have access to Facebook, we will also be posting on our YouTube channel, and links to the recordings will be made available on our website. We'll also be back here one week from today at 1:00 PM to livestream the State of the City address featuring Mayor Salvador Melendez. The city has taken some great strides in the past year, and we're looking forward to sharing all those positive developments with you next Thursday. If you'd like to receive updates about that event, please pre-register for the event on our website. Speaking of our website, as of today, you'll find information about all the city council candidates, as well as voter information and ballot drop-off locations. This year's election will be very unique, with social distancing changing the way we engage with candidates and altering the way many voters cast their votes. So we're hoping these resources will be helpful to you. Give me just one second. There we go. Sorry, just a little technical glitch. Tonight's event is made possible thanks to the participation and support of many people that I'd like to quickly thank right now. Our sponsors, event sponsors, thanks to their generous support, we're able to have this event. So thank you, Athens Services and SoCal Gas. The members of our Government Affairs Committee, who helped to plan this event and who are also helping us to execute tonight, thank you very much. And all the candidates for bringing their participation to this event, thank you all very much for being here tonight. A special thank you to our moderator, who is volunteering his time to facilitate this forum. His name is Scott Smith. By day, he's the Communications Officer for the ABC Unified School District. By night, he's the superhero volunteering his time and expertise to facilitate this event. Two years ago, he was the Executive Director of the Cerritos Regional Chamber of Commerce, and he was also the moderator of our 2018 candidate forum. He did such an amazing job that we very much wanted him to do it again. And luckily, he graciously accepted our invitation. And a real quick personal thank you to our staff members, Adriana Dugan and Celine Kalinoff, for their help with this event. So, as you may already be aware, Montebello voters will be electing two members of the Montebello City Council this November. And there are eight candidates on the ballot who are campaigning to earn the voter's support. All of them are with us here tonight. It's our intention that Montebello voters become better acquainted with all the candidates so that they can make informed choices when casting their ballots. With its 108-year history, the Montebello Chamber of Commerce has played an integral role for over a century in this community, as well as in the foundation of the city of Montebello, which is celebrating its 100th anniversary this year. So we're very proud to present this opportunity to bring together the city's voters and candidates for city council. The chamber will not be endorsing any particular candidate, so this forum is solely meant to provide an equal and fair opportunity for all the candidates to express their platforms and policies. Tonight, we will be focusing exclusively on issues relevant to local voters. We want to foster a supportive, non-confrontational environment for productive communication between the voters and the candidates. So I appreciate everyone's cooperation in honoring the positive spirit of this forum. Before we get started, we'll be hearing very briefly from one of the sponsors of tonight's event, representing SoCal Gas. I'd like to introduce Denise Campos, Public Affairs Manager, who is also a member of our Board of Directors and co-chair of the Government Affairs Committee. Denise?
Good evening. It's my pleasure to support the Montebello Chamber of Commerce's candidate forum on behalf of SoCal Gas. This year, more than ever, it's important to have a space for conversation. There are many issues that affect our quality of life, and a city is where the rubber hits the road. And in a city like Montebello, being a council member is a part-time job. So our elected officials need our civic engagement so that they know what the community's priorities are. Whether it's the local economy, public safety, or the environment, I'm happy to support this platform to have the dialogue so that we can be more educated voters for the upcoming election. But what if you're concerned about the environment? We are too. At SoCal Gas, we're looking to the future, and we will continue to deliver reliable and affordable energy to our 22 million customers in central and southern California. However, I want you to know that one out of three customers qualify for low-income discounts. So we understand the need to keep energy affordable. And technology is constantly evolving. Eighty-seven percent of California's methane emissions come from the agriculture and waste industries. We now have the technology to capture that waste from dairy farms and put it in our pipelines so that our energy is cleaner than ever. Our vision is to be the cleanest gas utility in North America, delivering affordable and increasingly renewable natural gas to our customers. And we're glad to continue to partner in the communities where we work and live. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. At this time, I'd like to invite tonight's moderator, Scott Smith. And I'm going to pin you, Scott, so we can see you to introduce the candidates and begin tonight's program. Scott?
Perfect. Thank you, Ani. It's my pleasure to serve as your moderator this evening. In the upcoming election, as Ani said, voters will fill two seats in the Montebello City Council. And we have eight candidates running for those seats, and they're all here with us this evening. I'd like to welcome and introduce the candidates in the order in which they appear on the ballot as put together by the Los Angeles County Registrar Recorder. We have David Torres, Jack Hagenian, Scarlett Peralta, Joella Valdez, Fernando Vasquez, Rosie Vasquez, and Byron Jackson. We appreciate you being here this evening. Each candidate will have two minutes to make an opening statement, which we'll get to shortly. The Government Affairs Committee has prepared a few questions, and we also received questions from the public in advance. If you're watching live on Facebook, please be aware that comments on this post are not being monitored during the event. And we are not able to ask the candidates any questions you might be posting there. Each candidate will have one minute to answer the questions. And finally, each candidate will have one minute to give their closing remarks this evening. Our timekeepers, who have a very, very important and stressful job this evening, are Armando Arenas and Susan Ayala. They're waving at us right now. Let's see their signs. They will hold up a sign that says 30 when you have 30 seconds. For folks watching at home, the candidates can see them right now, and they're seeing the 30-second sign. And then you'll have the stop sign. So they're now being shown the stop sign, which is a stop sign, when your time is up. Please respect these time limits so all the candidates have a fair and equal amount of time to share their views. And Ani's finger is hovering right over the mouse on the mute button. So if you go over, you'll get the gong. Again, the order of the candidates for the opening statements, which we'll get to shortly, coincides with the order in which the Los Angeles County Registrar Recorder has listed them on the ballot. We will then proceed in a round-robin format for each question from the chamber and the public. Let's begin. Let me remind all of the candidates, you have two minutes to make your opening statements. So we will begin with Mr. David Torres. You have two minutes, Mr. Torres. Go ahead.
Absolutely. Welcome, Montebello, to this momentous occasion. We are on the cusp of a great revolution in our city in terms of the development, in terms of the energy and the excitement that's going on. And this election is no less momentous than the last in terms of continuing the wave of new energy that we saw last time. Of course, I'd like to start off by saying thank you to the chamber and to their staff for organizing this event. Watching the way that you guys have worked over the last six to nine months of this whole pandemic has been absolutely incredible. And the seamlessness of this experience is a testament to all of the lessons that you've learned over time. I'd also like to thank all the candidates for coming out this time. We have all eight to actually give Montebello a chance to make an informed choice. So welcome to the new ones that couldn't join us last time. About myself, I'm a lifelong resident of Montebello and a current council member. I went to all Montebello Unified School District schools, and I've been serving on the Montebello City Council for about 16 months now. And in that time, it's been an absolute pleasure to serve. Being a lifelong resident, I saw the problems that we had. Being on the council, I've been able to address them very directly. And when I ran the first time around, I had three main objectives. The first was to increase access to information. The second was to bring long-term, stable leadership to the city so we could accomplish long-term goals. And the third was to enhance community collaboration. And I've been able to deliver on all three of those. First of all, increasing access to information with the My Montebello app, bringing long-term, stable leadership with our city manager. And just like today, seeing Taylor Ranch open for the first time in a decade. And now looking toward the next term, what would I do for the next four years? It's focusing on developing a vibrant downtown Montebello, a place to dine and shop in our own city. It's about keeping structural, fiscal accountability with our Measure H tax dollars, which the taxpayers so much she gave us. And thank you for your time.
I'm sorry, your two minutes are up. I know how fast that goes. Our next opening statement will be from Jack Hagenian. Mr. Hagenian?
Hi, thank you. And it's a pleasure to be here with the chamber. Obviously, the chamber means a lot to me. I'm a former chairman of the board. But let me tell you that since I've been elected to the city council, I've focused on wasteful spending. I've settled just about every lawsuit that I inherited when I got elected, refinanced bonds, saving the city millions of dollars a year. Somebody mentioned earlier the Taylor Ranch. That was my project that I was bringing attention to, to open up since 2013. It's documented by the Whittier Daily News. Stability at City Hall. Finding permanent department heads was also a focus of mine because people wanted to keep hiring interim, you know, department heads to keep things kind of unstable, and it just didn't make any sense. And obviously, I'm most proud of my strong positions on issues. And I'm proud that the paving the way project, again, is another project that I started in 2013. And we finally got that off the ground, which is a $25 million citywide street improvement plan. About 110 streets, including curved sidewalks, gutters, tree removals, new trees, driveway approaches, something that the community really appreciates, and they expected that to get done. If I have more time, I also want to let you know that I've brought in a homeless program, being the chairman of the Gateway City's Homeless Committee, where we represent a large area from Montebello as south as Long Beach. And with our fire department, we've created this program, about $600,000 to actually have an active approach to solving the homeless issue in Montebello. A lot more work that needs to be done, and I'm looking forward to finishing a lot of the work that we started and, you know, just really representing the community of Montebello. Born and raised. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hagenian. Next, we will hear from candidate Scarlett Peralta. Scarlett, please.
Hi, everyone. It's a pleasure and honor to be able to address my community this evening. I have lived in Montebello since I first immigrated from Mexico when I was two years old with my mom. And I'm a proud product of our local school system and proud graduate of Sur High School. I have a bachelor's in international relations from UC Santa Barbara and a master's in public policy from UC Irvine. I have worked with community-based organizations like Healthy Kids Happy Faces, where we have brought tools and resources to working families across southeast Los Angeles. And I currently serve on the Montebello's Investment Committee, where we monitor our investment portfolio. I have been an active volunteer with MAOF for the past 10 years, where I have worked to assist with their senior programs, resource fairs, and helping to promote their services to our Montebello residents. I have been an educator in our Montebello Unified School District leading classrooms and a mentor for our College Down-to-Day Program, where I have mentored and worked with families and their children in helping them attain a higher education. We are in a defining moment in Montebello. The next representatives elected to our city council will not only face challenges, but opportunities in creating a healthier and more vibrant community. Temperament matters. Reasonable, compassionate, and driven people matter, and those are qualities that I have always put forth in all the work that I have involved myself with. My top issues are directly tied to my lifelong advocacy for families and my experiences growing up in Montebello. I will advocate for increased transparency and accountability, invest in our future through sustainable developments, build stronger partnerships to expand opportunities for our residents. But above all, I have a genuine love for my city, and I want to be a force of change for the community that has raised me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Scarlett. The next candidate to speak will be Joseph Sanchez. Mr. Sanchez?
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. My name is Joseph Sanchez. I'm a fourth-generation resident of the city of Montebello. We've been in the same house since 1905, 115 years. I decided to run because the South and the Montebello needs a little bit more representation. I was born in Beverly Hospital. I've also went through all the school districts in Montebello Unified School District. I graduated from Sur High School. I only have a high school diploma. I'm self-employed. I own my own business. I've been married 28 years, have four children. What I want to do for the city is prepare us for the future. Honestly, it's a shame, not the current council, but previous councils have been. We've been here for 100 years, and in the situation of all the current council had us do to get us to a point of positivity is hard for them. I'm trying to prevent that 100 years from now. My main goal as being an elected official is to care us for 50 years from now, 60 years from now. I understand there's some candidates who are running, who are still trying to get their feet wet, which is fine, awesome. I'm one of them. What else? That's about it right now. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Joseph. The next candidate that we'll hear from is Joella Valdez. Joella, please.
Hi.
Oh, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
We can't.
I always seem to have technical difficulties with... Okay. My family immigrated from Central America and has called Montebello home for more than 20 years. And when the time came for me to decide on a place to raise my own family, I decided to stay right here where my family has roots. I'm a graduate of USC with over 15 years of experience working in government affairs and procurement. I want to bring my experience in planning and implementing policy to Montebello and help execute the vision that we all have for our community, including making sure that these big projects coming to Montebello are done right, on time, and with the least amount of negative impact on us, the residents that live and work here. Two, cut the red tape and make Montebello a more business-friendly city that will attract more businesses and investment from our own community. Three, work with our public safety department to make sure that they have the resources to protect and serve our community. I don't believe in recreating the wheel. For the past two years, our city council members and city manager has worked as a team to create a wheel. Now, they need help to push this wheel and continue to move forward in progress. Bold changes sound good, but sometimes, in our attempt to recreate the wheel, we start chipping away, and it ends up being a square. And a square doesn't roll. It doesn't move forward. When elected, I will join the team in continuing its progress to a brighter Montebello. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joella. We appreciate that. The next candidate to speak will be Fernando Vasquez. Mr. Vasquez? You're muted, sir. You're still muted, sir. You're muted. Mr. Vasquez, you're muted. There we go. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, hi. Nice to meet everyone again. Okay, so I'm a... You know, I come from a family of five. I was raised in Montebello. And basically, I attended the school system here in Montebello. I went out and ventured off to other parts of the state, like Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, Vermont, New York, Washington, DC. And you know what? I ended up a little influenced on my decision to eventually run for city council. While in the process, I noticed that Montebello was encountering a lot of scrutiny over some decisions that were made financially. And debt eventually accumulated over the course of years. So something that was neglected at one point, Montebello decided to just keep pushing to see how much they can do with that debt that they accumulated over the years. So 14 years ago, I decided to run for Montebello City Council seat and read about the challenges Montebello at the time was facing. So basically, my vision of how Montebello should be and for its residents, it's pretty clear. Everybody, in my opinion, is a capitalist. And they're only a capitalist for the time being just so that they can have the system work for them. You know, and I know companies that come to Montebello may want to see that and might end up benefiting from that, you know, by bringing in the revenue and investing in Montebello's people and the city. So what I would do is I'll bring staffing vacancies up to par. And also, now that the COVID-19, the city should offer its own solution for the pandemic on how to get rid of and how to prevent that from happening. You know, I have a better solution. So I'll commit myself to work for the people so that all the decisions that I make...
Vasquez, your time is up.
Okay.
Apologize.
Thank you.
Next up is Rosie Vasquez. Ms. Vasquez, please. You have two minutes. I remind you.
Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this candidate forum. As long... I'm a longtime business owner in Montebello. I appreciate the work of the chamber to promote businesses in our city. I have been a homeowner in this city for many, many years. I raised a family and supported more volunteer organizations than I can name. Professionally, I was the first Latina television news commentator in Los Angeles. I served as an administrator for a city department and operated a retail business in our city. Montebello is looking a little tired and old, and it's time we get back to basics and freshen up the place. Our streets need to be repaved at a much faster pace. Our parks need to be updated, and our major boulevards need to be beautified. We need to build the community center that the residents were promised. We need to open a police substation in South Montebello. And we need to get a good plan for the goal line extension that will be coming to Washington Boulevard. Most importantly, we need to rebuild our base of businesses in Montebello. The sales tax that they generate support all the city services. Montebello is a wonderful community, and it is strategically located for business and residents. With the freeway improvements and the goal line, we have the opportunity to enhance our commercial areas, create new businesses, and housing. My vision for Montebello is simple. Let's preserve the amenities that brought us all here in the first place. Then, let's fix up the areas that are not providing those benefits. If I'm elected to the city council as your leader, I will be a public servant, not a politician. You can count on me to focus on my vision to make Montebello a better place to work, live, and raise a family. Thank you.
Your time is up. Thank you very much. Our last opening statement will come from candidate Byron Jackson. Byron, please. You're muted, sir. You're still muted, sir.
There you go. You guys had me muted. Okay. Hello, thank you. I'm Byron Jackson, 42-year-old resident. I am a Beverly baby, a Lammershead Trojan, and a Montebello oiler. Being a 42-year-old lifelong resident, I remember the times when this was the Beverly Hills of East LA. Obviously, that's not the case anymore. These days, people want to refer to us as Monta Ghetto. I'm not having that. Why is that happening? Because those who have served before us, some currently even, have neglected to address the issues in our city that can be fixed. Why do we have empty lots around town? Why do we have so many abandoned businesses? The tools are on the books. The tools are there for code enforcement, to find these slum lords, to find these defunct developers that they keep working with over and over. Why do we keep doing it? I don't understand. I'm here because I'm not the politician. I'm one of you. Let's take Montebello back from the professional politicians and their big-money donors. I've only spent $400. I doubt anyone else here can say that. And let's take it back for us, for the people. Let's do what's right for the city, for the residents, and not for our donors, not for these companies. One's even our sponsor tonight. No. Let's do what's necessary for us, for Montebello. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Byron. Now, we will start our questions for the candidates. Again, this will be in round-robin format, and you will have one minute to respond. And we will start with Jack Hagenian. Jack will be first up here, so unmute. The first question, and this will be the same question for all candidates. What are your views on the city of Montebello's current general plan? How would you change it?
That's an easy question to answer. We're actually in the process of updating our general plan for the city. Obviously, it's outdated. The last time it was updated was 1973. Richard Nixon was the president. So we're actually updating it as we speak now. We've already had a study session. And we spent quite a bit of money on that general plan update. And I want to say that between our Economic Development Department and the contractor that we hired to update the general plan, we've already brought in $300,000 in grant money. So, you know, almost half of the cost of this general plan update has been paid for by grant money. So it's outdated. Why it took so long is because you had council majorities in the past that didn't give this priority. And I have served with some of those people not very far back in our history. And they truly prioritize other issues. Then that's why we're at this junction now. But...
We're running out of time. Thank you. Thank you for your response. The next candidate we'll hear from is Scarlett Peralta. Scarlett, the same question. You want to unmute? The same question is, what are your views on the city of Montebello's current general plan? And how would you change it?
Absolutely. As has mentioned, you know, our general plan has not been updated since 1973. Now that our general plan will finally be updated, it will be an exciting time to actually develop a new physical outlook for Montebello that will actually reflect the values and priorities of our community, which has long been missing. I would like to prioritize more green and open spaces for our communities, preservation and enhancement of our neighborhoods, as well as creating a more vibrant urban corridors to revamp our underdeveloped areas, especially in our South Side Montebello and Whittier areas, Whittier Boulevard areas, where many of our businesses are currently shutting down. And, you know, many of our residents in the South Side area don't have the essential services that they need, again, because these areas have just been underdeveloped and completely abandoned.
Thank you very much. The next question makes me... The same question goes to Joseph Sanchez. Joseph, the question again. You want to unmute? The question again is, what are your views on the city of Montebello's current general plan? How would you change it? You have one minute.
Thank you, Scott. As for the general plan, I'm happy. I'm happy that they finally put it at the front and started making plans to update it. I was born in '73. I'm 46 years old. I'm as old as the old general plan. So it's a blessing that the city has finally took a step forward in preparing our general plan and hopefully brought it up to date so we can start helping the community with it. So honestly, I have currently nothing to change to it or anything to add to it. But hopefully, once I get a board, I can have a better idea of how we can better it for the residents of Montebello. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next candidate to address this question is Joella Valdez. Joella, again, the question is, what are your views on the city of Montebello's current general plan? And how would you change it? You have one minute.
Thank you, Scott. My view is that the general plan is grossly outdated. I want to know why we had a city administrator for 15 years. I want to know why we had a city administrator for 15 years that did not make an effort to update the plan. I understand that we incurred lots of instability, but I'm happy now to know that we have a city manager that's working with our city council that has started getting the funds together to update the plan because it's quite expensive to update the plan. My views, what I would like to see is a downtown specific plan included in the general plan that's going to focus on businesses because we need a plan in order to make sure that we have the right type of businesses coming in and attracting the right type of businesses and encouraging our own residents to invest in the community and start our own businesses right here. We've seen it happening. I don't want to mention anything in specific, but I'm very happy to see that our own community is beginning to invest in spaces made for us and by us. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next candidate to speak is Fernando Vasquez. Fernando, you might want to take yourself off mute. What are your views on the city of Montebello's current general plan and how would you change it? Again, take yourself off mute and you have one minute.
Okay, hi, yes. Well, Montebello's treated me well, but after investigating, what I would do is levy property taxes so we can raise the revenue. Hopefully increase business to move here so we can increase tax income or revenue, I'm sorry. You know, we want to bring revenue to the city to add more to the general fund. I really don't have the books open here to, you know, to read and to know more on that, but you know, there was a lot of mismanagement and abuse, you know, I think maybe perhaps marginalized expenditures. You know, stop giving priority to certain, certain developments and rather focusing on pulling that money in development and, and give it into another priority, you know? So I think in a, in a sense.
All right, Mr. Vasquez, you've, you've run out of time. Thank you, though.
Thank you.
Our next candidate to address this question is Rosie Vasquez. Again, Rosie, the question is, what are your views on the city of Montebello's current general plan? How would you change it? You have one minute.
Thank you. Well, I welcome the general plan. The general plan is really a roadmap as to what the future of Montebello is going to be all about. And so having that in place and it's already there, we'll be able to hopefully incorporate not only the Whittier Boulevard area, but also the Washington Boulevard area into the general plan. And of course, we will never, I will never forget that we will need to include the community, which need to have some town hall meetings and have people come in and encourage the council, you know, give ideas and how to, to maneuver here through this general plan. It really is a very important document and I am surprised that it's been that long that it had not been revisited. So I have to again congratulate the city manager along with the council for taking this up and being able to, you know, study it. And there's a lot of changes coming.
I apologize. Run out of time.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Our next candidate to address this question is Byron Jackson. Byron, take yourself off mute. What are your views on the city of Montebello's current general plan and how would you change it? Take yourself off mute, sir. There we go.
You guys have to send a prompt every time. That's weird. So general plan, I can't discuss it specifically because it hasn't happened yet. So what good would it do, honestly, if even the things we have on the books before, nobody followed? We have plans on the books already to address a lot of the issues. We have a, a color specific plan for the Boulevard to, to make our business districts cohesive and, and nice looking, but they weren't followed. Nobody's enforcing it. Nobody enforces any of the stuff that we have on the books. So why are you just going to put more laws on the books? I mean, we need it. It's true, but only if we follow it. What I'd like to see on it, more parks, more police. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And finishing up this first question will be candidate David Torres.
My, my view on the current general plan is that it does not account for the 21st century and 21st century technology. Here's what I've done to change it in the last 18 months. I'm proud to have voted for a bicycle master plan to protect cyclists and plan for alternative transportation. I'm proud to have voted for a facilities master plan and a parks master plan to increase energy efficiency and save tax dollars and open and update our spaces where our kids and our sports teams play. And here's what I'll do to change it further. And, and as everyone has mentioned, this is an important document. What we need to do is we need to take a look at parking. Residents are asking for permitted parking. They're asking for parking structures. We need to look at units and developments that are appropriate for their spaces and for the traffic needs of the future. We need to take traffic concerns seriously. We need to look at what boulevards are, are appropriate for traffic. We need to look at, you know, the metro gold line rails, electric infrastructure for charging it for solar power. Further expanding park space. We just had a presentation yesterday where we were told that there's only one acre per thousand residents, whereas the LA County averages eight acres per 1,000 residents. And lastly, we need to develop our boulevard.
Mr. Torres, your time is up. We will now move on to the second question. And this is a very timely question. It is, the current public health crisis has had a substantial impact on the local economy. What steps would you take to spur economic recovery? Our first candidate will be Scarlett Peralta.
Absolutely. So as far as a COVID-19 response and community resilience plan is something that I plan to implement when elected. We need to be supporting our small businesses for closing up shop due to the pandemic and the impact that it's having on our small businesses. We must work to provide pandemic relief and supportive resources for our small businesses. CARES Act funding should not be discussed in closed session meetings. As it has been, our community deserves to have input as far as where they would like these funds to be going to. I would also like to implement a COVID community task, task force made up of residents, business owners and community stakeholders to be able to develop a long-term vision and healthy, stable plan for economic recovery, as well as a, a crisis communication plan that includes marketing and outreach campaigns to promote local businesses who sales have currently been decreasing, as well as revamping on my Bonavaro app to display any weekly promotions that our businesses are having. The app is currently not, you know, promoting anything in our city and it would be great to be able to have that.
Your time is up. Thank you very much. All right. The same question goes to Mr. Sanchez, Joseph Sanchez. Joseph, the question again is, the current public health crisis has had a substantial impact on the local economy. What steps would you take to spur economic recovery? You have one minute, sir.
What we need to do is be financially stable as a city. The way to get to that financial stability is to own the commercial property. If we had owned that old Costco building and leased it out when Costco left, who knows? We could have had a little extra chump change to help out our community. We need to own the property to prepare for the next pandemic because according to the experts, another one's coming. I wasn't affected with this one, but apparently they saying another one's coming. So we need to prepare for it. And the way to do it is have financial stability, which currently we don't. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Same question for Joella Valdez. Joella, would you like to hear the question again?
Just, just to be sure, yes.
Sure, sure. It is, the current public health crisis has had a substantial impact on the local economy. What steps would you take to spur economic recovery? You have one minute.
COVID has absolutely threw a curve ball in all of our lives. As an independent business owner, I myself has not been able to even get to some jobs due to safer at-home measures and travel restrictions. I don't want to talk about what would be done or what should be done. Things need to be done now. Our leaders need to work with federal and state funding to find resources for our business owners and for our residents. We need to make sure that these businesses that are fighting to keep their doors open have the resources that they need. And it's not just money, but they need resources to stay open. We also need to make sure our residents stay in their homes and stay with food on the table. We are suffering tremendous food insecurity in our community. Thankfully, we have many resources to help out some families, but we have to make sure that everyone is included. And we have to do this now, not if elected, when elected, or who's going to do what. This needs to happen now and you don't have to be a council member to help make these things happen. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. The, the next candidate to address this question is Fernando Vasquez. Fernando, why don't you take yourself off mute? Would you like to hear the question again? You're still on mute.
Yes, yes.
The current public health crisis has had a substantial impact on the local economy. What steps would you take to spur economic recovery?
Okay, so my operational strategy, I'm going to call it. My operational strategy would be now that we are at the bottom or at the cusp of getting somewhere with this COVID-19, I think now that we're there, we should provide low-income housing. Learn how to perhaps work more intensively with the homelessness and the crisis is out in, in, in the rural parts of the cities and suburbs. That's a, that's a game changer. That, that's a moneymaker. Basically, the choices that the city has to make would, would have to in turn also perhaps provide a municipality code that could provide interest and more money towards the city by making these choices because a lot of the time, the services that Montebello provides, they may not be getting paid enough or a substantial amount of money for providing these services.
Mr. Vasquez, you've run out of time. Thank you for your answer. The next candidate to address the question is Rosie Vasquez. Rosie, you want to?
Repeat the question, please.
I can do that for you. The current public health crisis has had a substantial impact on the local economy. What steps would you take to spur economic recovery? You have one minute. But you're back on mute. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. We're really at a crossroads here in Montebello and throughout the country with COVID-19. As a businesswoman and a small businesswoman, I can tell you, our community businesses are suffering. And the city can be very helpful in this way. I agree that we should perhaps look at the possibility of getting some consultants, some business consultants that our community businesses here in Montebello will be able to call City Hall and that we can work together. City Hall, city manager, council, all of us together so that we can assure that our small businesses do not go under. Our main concern here, my main concern here is to make sure that we can work very, very diligently and closely in making sure that our communities, small businesses are vital to our economy and to our services. Without the money from our small businesses, we cannot provide the services that we need to.
Thank you very much, Rosie. You've run out of time. Thank you. Our next candidate to address this question is Byron Jackson. Byron, you want to go ahead and take yourself off mute? And I can read the question while you're going through that. The current public health crisis.
There we go.
At us. There we go.
All right. To help out businesses with COVID, all we got to do, it's, it's easy. Just get out of the way. Quite a few of our businesses locally actually have run through a lot of red tape just to open their parking lot patio service. Why is the city standing in the way? Other cities like Whittier, Alhambra, they went to the businesses first. The city people came up with the idea and went to the businesses and told them, we're closing down the street. We're closing the sidewalks. You can come out and open your business and do what you got to do. Here, it's the opposite. Our businesses are asking for the help and the city's standing in the way. So as far as that's all we need to do. As far as the city, we're going to be facing a large deficit come next year and the year after. So let's see what happens with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next candidate to address this question is David Torres. Mr. Torres, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, that's okay, Mr. Smith. I have it. Thank you. So in this pandemic, what small businesses need is time. The effects of restrictions imposed by the state, imposed by the county, imposed by our country are not going away soon enough for businesses to recover. I've been in conversations with them and they're talking about they have just a few months of leeway left. Montebello has a unique ability to address it. Measure H balanced our budget. When the voters pass Measure H, we, we're expecting a $4 million influx to fill that hole of our budget's shortfalls. What are we going to do with the resources that we have coming up? A huge one that we have is the sale of our water company for $15 million. I proposed this idea at the last forum. I think that this is something that council should strongly consider is creating a fund for small businesses to have either low interest or interest-free loans. We have businesses that have planted their roots here that have supported our economy. We need to show as a council and as a community that we support them and we want to see them succeed, especially considering that sales taxes make up such a big part of the way that we manage our budget. So I say, let's support our small businesses. Let's create a fund and let's make them successful.
Sir, the timer has held up the stop sign. Thank you for your answer. And the final candidate to address this question is Jack Hagenian. Jack, if you could, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I'm fine. Let me, let me begin by letting you all know that the city of Montebello has tried very hard to accommodate businesses in this challenging time right now. I went on doing a couple workshops online with our mayor, Sal Melendez, to explain the CARES Act, the SBA Relief Plan, unemployment, unemployment benefits. I've made myself available to help those get through that process. Also, we got money from HUD of over $300,000 and with that money, we've paid for some of these tents to go up, for restaurants to stay in business, to try to endure this tough time. My colleague mentions the water sale that hasn't been approved yet. The PUC still has to approve that sale. So we shouldn't be banking on any of that money. And also the sales tax just started this July 1st. So we're yet to see what kind of money that's going to garner before we start talking about how we're going to allocate that money. But this is a tough time and, and rest assured, I'm going to continue to make sure that residents and business owners are able to apply for what's available through the federal government and state.
We've gotten to the end of your one minute and it's now time to move on to the next question, question number three. I'll read that now. If the city is required to make budget cuts due to the current economic crisis, what programs would you cut first? Starting this round of questions is Joseph Sanchez. Joseph, if you want to take yourself off mute, you'll have one minute. So again, the question is, if the city is required to make budget cuts due to the current economic crisis, what programs would you cut first? Again, one minute.
That's a hard one. I actually wouldn't want to cut none. So we would have to go like a duck, duck goose. We take a little bit off of one program, a little bit off another, a little bit off another, and a little bit off another. To cut one program that is essential for us to run our city is not fair to those people in that program. So my objective would be is to take a little bit off of every program. And then hopefully we can get through it and then bring reinstate everyone back in instead of just picking on one individual program. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. The next candidate to address this question is Joella Valdez. Joella, would you like me to repeat the question as you take yourself off mute?
No, I got it. Thank you. Scott, that is a very tough question. As a mom, usually we see the first things to get cut is programs for children, programs for seniors or parks and recreations, and that's a hard no for me. But what I would do, this is a tough question and that's why council is made up of five people. And what I would do is I would take a look at things that do.
Oh, we lost you there?
But as a taxpayer and a homeowner, that is something that does concern me and I'd like to take a look at how that is, how, looking into that, how we could generate more revenue and also look at underused spaces and underused businesses that are managed or owned by the city and how we can create more revenue. So I would like to look into creating more revenue or finding revenue in other places versus cutting our essential services that we do need and, and our services to our senior citizens and our children because those are very important to me.
All right. Thank you very much. The next candidate to address this question is Fernando Vasquez. Mr. Vasquez, take yourself off mute. Would you like me to repeat the question as you're doing that?
Yes, please.
Certainly. If the city is required to make budget cuts due to the current economic crisis, what programs would you cut first? Give one minute.
Okay, I, I wouldn't necessarily cut any programs. Maybe cut the overtime. The overtime within the, within the department, you know, in general. Cut some unnecessary overtime, you know, we're looking at too many officers on patrol when they shouldn't be. You know, that sort of stuff. You know, that sort of stuff, maybe parks and recs as well. It's just too much overtime, unnecessary overcrowding of employees sometimes. They're just pushing brooms. They're not. They're not working. So minimize the the staff, but also, you know, employ more staff, but just not have unnecessary, you know, employees running around doing nothing. Just, you know, use what you need and then, you know, get paid for for that. But other than that, I think that's only being overtime. That's what I would cut.
All right, thank you, sir. The next candidate to address this question is Rosie Vasquez. Rosie, if you want to take yourself off mute? It looks like she's maybe having some technical issues. So why don't we move on and we'll circle back to her? Would that be okay, Ani? All right. Oh, Rosie, are you back with us? If you could take yourself off mute?
Just one second, please.
Certainly. Would you like me to restate the question?
Yeah, absolutely.
The if the city is required to make budget cuts due to the current economic crisis, what programs would you cut first? You have one minute. Yep. We we will circle back to Rosie.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, there you go. You have one minute again. Go ahead.
Okay, I couldn't hear the question, but I've heard it enough that I can answer it. First of all, it is not acceptable. You know, to cut any programming as it is now, I think in our city, we are pretty tight with what we have in programming. So I would do everything I could in my power to go to the city manager who actually knows everywhere, every penny is at, and sit down and hopefully call a special meeting, of course, and and look at all the departments, not just one department. And of course, looking at maybe part-time situations instead of full-time, but certainly the least thing, the last thing I would want to do is to cut a program. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosie. Appreciate that. Mr. Jackson, you'll be the next candidate to address this question. Would you like me to read it again, sir?
I'm good, Scott. Thank you. That's an easy question. No programs need to be cut. We just need to cut some positions, actually. A lot of these newly created positions just came on the last year or so. Bus Department, Transit Department, PIO. Do they really need their own PIO? I mean, that's kind of ridiculous. $30,000 for a Christmas tree, $15,000 for a camera drone. I mean, come on. There's a lot of other things we can cut before we cut anything that's necessary, like public safety. My one promise is facing the COVID deficit is before we cut any police or fire, I will cut other people first. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question for Mr. Torres. David, you have one minute.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. So when I ran for council in 2018, I was coming in looking at a multimillion-dollar structural deficit. Hard financial times aren't anything that's new to Montebello, and my views today are the same as they were then. First of all, we we need to look at what the essential functions of government are, and that's to provide for the public safety and the welfare of our residents. Now, what does essential functions mean? Essential functions are things like public safety. That's our police and fire. We need to make sure that our residents are safe and secure in their homes. That means that they can address emergencies, especially medical emergencies in times of hardship. Essential functions of government are things like water and power. Make sure that people can turn on the light, can refrigerate their food and take a shower. Unfortunately, as is the case in times like these, and to answer the question directly and not dance around it, parks and rec, recreational programs are usually the first to go. That's the first step that we need to look at is say, what are we, what are our core functions and are we making sure that our residents are safe?
Thank you very much, David. Same question goes to Jack Hagenian.
Okay, so I've I've worked through these tough times before in the past. It's, you know, one department is not more important than the other, vice versa. What I would do is I would scale back on all contract services temporarily, maybe do a rotation of employees like we've done in the past. You know, I would not reduce public safety whatsoever because during tough economic times, property crimes grow significantly, and you know, your residents are at risk. So I would never want that situation to arise here in Montebello. That's why it's critical that you have a healthy reserve so you can sustain those tough times. And right now, Montebello has a very healthy reserve. We have over $10 million in reserves right now. So, you know, for those who are being critical about how money's managed here, they're completely inaccurate with their statements.
All right, thank you. Our next candidate is Scarlett Peralta. Scarlett.
Yes, yes. So, you know, the city of Montebello has faced structural deficits for many years. We've been on this boat as far as not knowing the stability of our economic recovery. And for me, you know, having family, having friends and family that live in the city in Montebello, that's something that I take seriously and will not, you know, we'll work to not, we'll work with our city manager to make sure that we're able to find everything that is appropriate, whether it's public safety, whether it's community, community services and functional services that keep our city running and are being maintained. We need to look at the positions that are available and see if we can scale back, but other than that, there is money out there. What we need to do is make sure that our city staff and our city manager is aggressively pursuing grants that are out there to be able to provide aid and help for cities, especially during these very hard times.
All right, thank you. So we will now move on to question number four. The question is, what are your views on current housing trends in Montebello, in particular, high-density housing? And to start us off with this question is candidate Joella Valdez. Joella, take yourself off mute. Oh, you couldn't hear me?
Yeah.
Let me let me repeat the question for you. What are your views on current housing trends in Montebello, in particular, high-density housing?
Thank you for the question. I am happy to know that Montebello has now a approved housing element that we did not have for a long time. I'm also happy to know that we are out of HUD prison. When it comes to high-density housing, I would like more attention to be paid. We have a lot of parking issues in the area that I live in, and I want to make sure that the planning is, it it's a holistic view, and we make sure that we have parking spaces. I live in a new development myself, and part of the approval process, we had to make sure that we had enough parking spaces. Oh, my time is running out, but high-density, for high-density housing, I would like, I I welcome it. Well, I welcome sustainable development. I welcome development, but done smartly and done taking consideration the residents that live here. Thank you.
Thank you. The same question will go to Mr. Fernando Vasquez. Fernando, take yourself off mute there. Would you like me to repeat the question, sir?
Yes, please.
What are your views on current housing trends in Montebello, in particular, high-density housing?
Okay, that's a very expensive topic. Why Montebello, or in my opinion, how Montebello decides to go to a high-density is very, very hard to believe. We're not in Texas. 67,000 people live in Montebello, you know? I don't know. But to start off, I know Montebello hasn't offered any low-income housing. I think there was only two cities that Montebello fell in that category that they never had any, any, any system for low-income families at all that they could provide. So to bring around something so aggressive as a high-density, I don't know, just the name alone is high-density, it's very expensive. It's gonna cost more money to keep the the system running where Montebello can't make that money. It's impossible. And if they do, you know what? I guess everything is possible, but it's not possible.
Thank you. The same question goes to Rosie Vasquez. Rosie, would you like me to repeat the question? Please take yourself off mute. The question again is, what are your views on current housing trends in Montebello, in particular, high-density housing?
Okay, first of all, high-density housing is something that I I just can't even fathom that we're gonna do something like that because city of Montebello is fairly a small city. Acreage-wise, if you noticed, there've been a lot of condos that have been built in the city, and I'm glad to see all of that. I, you know, I support housing, especially affordable housing. That's very important for our families. And also, I just wanted to add, someone just mentioned about the parking situation. Before I make any commitments of any kind, although I do support, you know, new housing, is the the parking issue. And I see it over and over and over again when we're making decisions about parking, and the parking situation is a tough one. And and before I make any commitment whatsoever, we gotta make sure that everything's, you know, just perfectly well between the the housing building-
One minute is up, Rosie. I appreciate-
Okay.
Now, the next candidate with this question is Byron Jackson. Byron, take yourself off mute there. Would you like me to repeat the question, sir?
No, sir, thank you. High-density, we don't need any more of it. We should see more single-family homes being built. And if we do see any more high-density developments, we gotta make sure that they have the proper parking. That's been the big issue here is they cram in these condos and they only have like 10 parking spaces, and now that just doesn't work. So, no, I'm not. I'm not for too much more high-density projects, but if we do, I would like to make sure that they have adequate parking at least.
All right, thank you. The next candidate to address this question is David Torres. David, you have one minute. Take yourself off mute.
Absolutely. So, Montebello, for a long time, this all goes back to the general plan, has had a bad habit of applying variances across the city. We've seen high-density condos pop up right off the train tracks on Olympic and a couple different places there along the post office, destroying the fabric of single-family neighborhoods and and the culture that we grew up in that we know as Montebello. What we need is the general plan as the first step. We need a long-term vision for parking, a long-term vision for alternative modes of transportation like light rail, bicycles. We need to look at infrastructure. We need to look at public safety, right? Are we adding residents without the ability to service them? Montebello also needs to look to the future. For so long, we've been stuck in what our issues of the past have been for the last five or 10 years, that we're not looking at trends of the next 10, 20, and 50 years. Right now, autonomous vehicles are are taking up the roadways, reducing the need for cars. Working from home is now gonna be a major factor, so let's look at what the future has.
David, your time is up. The same question goes to Jack Hagenian. Jack?
Yeah, thank you. Let me remind David Torres that he makes comment that we destroyed single-family and built new housing on Olympic. That was actually industrial property that we converted to housing because we have a shortage of 3,000 units. So obviously, he doesn't know what he's talking about there. Housing trends are created by market demand. We can't build something that nobody's gonna buy or rent, just like any developer. They've got, they gotta make sure that what they're building is either rentable or sellable. Urban development along Whittier Boulevard in Washington is something I highly support. We need that, and to incorporate that with public transportation, we have a shortage of move-up housing. That's why the Hills Project got approved, because there is a huge demand for that. And also workforce housing, affordable housing, it's very expensive. We need to work on that. We've tried very hard to attract developers here, but you need to know that that type of product is almost twice as expensive as building a market project. So I'm very supportive of housing.
Thank you, Jack. Right as your time ran out. Perfect timing. Question for Scarlett. Yes, Ani?
I I just want to remind our candidates that we have a policy, you're to talk about your policies and platforms and stay focused on issues. Personal attacks on other candidates who are who are participating here should be avoided, please.
Thank you for that reminder. We see enough of that in national politics. Again, the same question for Scarlett Peralta. Scarlett, would you like me to repeat the question and please take yourself off mute?
No, it's okay. So as someone that grew up in high-density apartments here in Montebello, I understand the issues. You know, we have many families that are being cramped up in very small apartment living spaces, many of them who have to park half a mile away simply because there's not enough parking. For me, you know, I take housing seriously. I believe in sustainable development as far as making sure that there is adequate parking put in place. City of Montebello has been called out by our governor in 2019 for not doing enough to address our housing crisis. Because of this, many of our young professionals, families, and seniors are being driven out of the city we love. For over, for more than past, for more than 10 years, our housing element has been uncompliant, which has made us lose on more than half a million dollars in community redevelopment grants and putting us behind on more than 577 affordable housing units. We need to create a Montebello that expands homeownership opportunities for young professionals and new families and protects vulnerable seniors who are on a fixed income and who have been part of our community for generations but are now being pushed out. As your councilwoman, I will tirelessly tirelessly fight to keep our families here in Montebello.
There on your time. Thank you very much. And finishing up this question will be candidate Joseph Sanchez. Joseph, you have one minute. Would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
The question is, what are your views on current housing trends in Montebello, in particular, high-density housing?
I think if we do it properly, it would work. It would benefit the individual, and it will benefit the city greatly. Washington Boulevard, 40 years from now, has the ability to do high-density housing with that MTA train coming. If we prepare properly now, we can make that place way better than Whittier Boulevard. But we need to start preparing now for 50 years from now. Our council 50 years ago should have prepared for 2020. They didn't. So we need to start preparing for 2070. And high-density, I think it can work. Maybe not too many people on each layer, but each layer having one person on that layer. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. All right, we will now move on to question number five, and this question is, what solutions would you advocate for in order to address homelessness? So we have a homeless question, and to start off this question, we will go to Fernando Vasquez. Fernando, why don't you take yourself off mute, and I'll repeat the question while you're doing that? What solutions would you advocate for in order to address homelessness? You have one minute, sir.
Okay, well, solutions, there's many. I I'd say homeless, there's no solution, but it is possible to resolve homelessness, if there is. But it's a money pit, a very expensive money pit. I call it a money pit because you're throwing money into a pit that has no bottom. But the the process is lengthy. I would provide services that they already have, you know, just, you know, keep helping them with their everyday basic life, their needs, through programs that have been established way before my time, probably. So other than that, I think in the long run, if we ignore these issues, it's gonna be very hard in Montebello to to stop it. You can't. Once-
Commander, your time is up. Same question goes now to Rosie Vasquez. Rosie, the question, you take yourself off mute. Your question is, what solutions would you advocate for in order to address homelessness?
Well, first of all, I have to say that the city of Montebello has a very, very good program, I believe, and and I will concur that they're doing a great job addressing it. I personally have been involved with situations of people who are homeless, and I would just add to the program whatever it needs to to add to it to make it a better program. That's fine, like grants, for example. Okay, we could look at that, and but overall, it's not an easy problem to solve, but I do have to congratulate the current administration for doing a great job on addressing homelessness here in Montebello. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosie. Same question for Byron Jackson. Byron, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, sir, I have it. We discussed this in the last forum, and unfortunately, I'll have to say that there's really no solution on the city level. Something like that's gonna have to come from the state, from the federal government. That's where we get the money. That's where we get the resources that we do offer them, and that's all you can do. That's all you can do is offer them these resources. If they don't want to take it, you can't force them. Unfortunately, you cannot force them. If they don't want to take it, you can't force them. Unfortunately, you cannot force them. I've been there with the police and with the fire department. We go under the bridge and 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 try to offer these people a way out and they don't want it. All we can do is just what we're doing already is just bringing those resources from the state and the federal and just try the hardest we can to 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 try to get them to, you know, convince them to to pull themselves out. But if they don't want to pull themselves out of that hole, we can't force them to. But we definitely need to be offering the assistance. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Same question for David Torres.
Thank you. Um solutions to address homelessness, there is no one single solution. It's an extremely complicated issue. Uh the first thing that I would do is I would advocate uh for continuing the path that we set along with our city manager. Uh we need to collaborate more closely with neighboring cities and our council of governments. By doing that, uh just recently, uh the city of Montebello was awarded about $215,000 uh to fund positions to address homelessness more directly. We need to work with our city, neighboring cities to pull our resources and identify our our separate and particular issues and and really look at what the cause in this and and what where it all stems from. We're talking about mental health issues. We're talking about disability. We're talking about drug use. We needed to see what kind of populations are we going to be serving? Are they single men? Are they women with children? We need to look at uh what the needs are, short term or long term housing. Do they need job training or job placement? There are, it's, there are a variety of factors, a variety of solutions, but we need to look outside of Montebello to solve it.
Thank you. Same question for Jack Hagenian.
So to answer this question, we actually have an active program in Montebello. It's called the Montebello Community Assistance Program, made up of a social worker, Angelica Palmeros, a fire, a firefighter, and a police officer at any given time. I represent the city at the San Gabriel Valley Cog. I brought $200,000 from the cog and San Gabriel Valley cog. I brought another $400,000 as the chairman of the homeless committee for the Gateway Cities, uh over $600,000. We have an incredible program where we have um a social worker, a cop, and a fireman approaching a homeless person, getting a medical attention, uh an active approach to getting them off the street. In many cases, these people go see a doctor and do not return to the street. That's how you address the homeless situation. I'm very proud of the work that we're doing here in Montebello. We have a great staff.
Thank you. The next candidate we'll hear from is Scarlett Peralta. Scarlett, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, it's okay. Thank you very much. So as a community tackles the shockwaves of the pandemic, many are losing their jobs, they're losing their incomes, and some are even facing evictions. As I've gone door to door and talked to my neighbors, many of them have shared their concerns of being evicted and possibly facing homelessness. We must pursue longer terms of illusions and we need to make sure that we're taking care of our community members who are vulnerable right now. It's a complex problem that I am very compassionate about. We must continue to support these partnerships that are being created and work with our neighboring cities as well as other nonprofits to work aggressively um as well as pursuing uh county grants to be able to expand these services uh to help the homeless in our community get back on their feet and promote a safer environment for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Scarlett. And now Joseph Sanchez. We'll hear from you. Would you like me to uh repeat the question?
Yes, please.
What solutions would you advocate for in order to address homelessness?
All we can do as a city is give them options. That's it. Hand up business cards and tell them you can go to these locations and these locations will help you to try to get you off your feet and to get you going. If they choose not to, then we tell them it is not safe for them to live under our bridges. The bridge could catch on fire. The bridge could collapse. Something could happen. We cannot have you live here under the bridge. We need you to make it your own decision. We ain't forcing you. You need to make your own decision and either help take these, take these services or move on. But basically, that's all we can do is just give them options. Can't make them do nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. In for, uh finally, we have Joella Valdez. Joella?
Thank you. Am I off mute? I'm off mute.
You are. Would you like to repeat the question?
No, it's fine. Um when we talk about homeless, the homeless crisis, I think that we also have to consider more than um what all of the other candidates have already touched on. Before COVID, many people were one paycheck away from being evicted or from being, becoming homeless. There are many families that are working families that are living in their cars and living in shelters, living in motels, one right here uh at the brink of commerce we pass every day to get on the five freeway. Some things that I would like to see done as a city initiative is affordable housing, more tenant protections like rent control. There are some state tenant protections, but it's good for individual cities to have their own uh tenant protections, especially if they're stronger than than the state ones because states aren't always permanent and they expire. And um there are other cities like Santa Monica and and Holly, West Hollywood and Los Angeles that do have rent control ordinances. Rent assistance for tenants affected by COVID, enforcement of laws meant to combat source of income discrimination.
Time is up.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
It's a, it's a big topic.
It it is. I know it's hard. It's hard to fit in some of these uh these big topics into a minute, but you're all doing very well. So the next question is, do you support the adoption of rent control in Montebello? And the first candidate to address this question will be Rosie Vasquez. Rosie, if you want to take yourself off mute. Again, the question is, do you support the adoption of rent control in Montebello?
Rent control in Montebello. Now, let me see. That is something that I believe that we should have rent control in Montebello. And I tell you why. Um many, many of our, especially right now, many of our families are behind their rent. And how could they be increase the rent when they can't even pay for the rent that they owe? So I am an advocate for that. I I think that um the times are just uh, you know, too hard and they have been. Uh someone just mentioned that uh this uh situation with COVID is is worse, but people were already suffering uh from again, uh you know, behind to pay their rent, trying to meet their obligations with their families and their children. So uh I'm not for rent control. Thank you.
All right. Same question goes to Byron Jackson. Byron, if you want to take yourself off mute. Do you support the adoption of rent control in the city of Montebello?
No, I don't, sir. As a uh a rental property owner, uh my family, we own plenty of rental properties and no, we don't want the government stepping into our pocketbook and telling us what to do. Um quite honestly, this is America. The free market dictates everything. Government needs to get out of the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question for David Torres. Mr. Torres?
Um so I think that uh I would be in favor of rent control and I have a few few reasons why. First of all, I want to see my generation and generations after me and uh the people that live in this city have the ability to stay in Montebello, benefit from um access to po- to high paying jobs, to world class entertainment uh without being pushed out. We're seeing this across the state of California where the state is just becoming too uh too expensive to live. And very specifically, we're talking about uh growing disparities in terms of wealth. Now, if you, if you take a look at studies and if you, and if you look at numbers, property is one of the quickest ways to to grow uh personal wealth and to establish generational wealth. What happens when uh you start to accumulate, when uh people with high net worth come in and buy up properties just to rent them out? Let's make sure that we give our residents a place to live. Let's give them a chance to enjoy uh the possibility, possibilities of Los Angeles. And let's really make California a place to thrive.
All right, thank you. Next, Jack Hagenian. Same question?
Thank you. Uh there's no need for rent control in Montebello, uh especially after AB 1482 was passed, that statewide rent control, uh which uh will avoid situations that were brought up by speakers before me of greedy developers coming in and possibly trying to uh vacate tenants. It's it's not that easy anymore to do that. That's why this bill came into place. So we're, we have to deal with that. That's for AB 1482. So there's no need for a citywide uh rent control. I have an issue with rent control, although it might sound good for people that are having affordability issues. But the problem with rent control is nobody has to qualify for it. And if we're gonna talk about rent control, let's talk about mortgage control. There is no such thing. My answer is, I do not support rent control.
Thank you. The next candidate we'll we'll hear from is Scarlett Peralta. Would you like me to repeat your question?
Oh, it's okay. Um so I do stand for rent control, you know, having as a young professional myself and having many of my friends who live in the city as well as many seniors in Montebello who are on a fixed income. Many of them are ba- being driven out of the city we love simply because they cannot afford to live here. Um we need to be sure that we are taking care of those community members that have been here for generations and those that want to continue creating new families here in Montebello. We need to be able to provide them that opportunity to be able to expand home, home, own, homeownership opportunities for them and being able to uh continue living in the city that, you know, they have been raised in and want to continue um creating their families in.
Thank you. Same question goes to Joseph Sanchez. Joseph, take yourself off mute there. Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, sir. Rent control, we don't need it. It causes too much frustrations between the property owners and the renters. But we do need to educate people on being greedy. Being an old man dying with millions in your pocketbook in your bank account, what good is it? It's better to give than receive. So we, as a city, if the city owns some properties and ran it to some long term residents who needed help, we can help them. Now, the guy who's gonna move in a month ago, maybe we won't help. Maybe we will, if we can. But as for rent control, I don't honestly think we need it. I think we need just to be more loving to one another in a sense. Stop being so greedy. Thank you.
Thank you. Joella Valdez, same question?
I'm gonna try to power through this. Yes, I do think that the city would benefit from some type of rent control ordinance. Um we do have state legislation, but like I said, that is limited. Sometimes it's not permanent. And also, right now, the state legislation does exempt buildings that are less than 15 years old. I do think that Montebello City would benefit from or uh from a rent control ordinance to fill in some of these holes to protect our tenants. Um I'm speaking from a very personal um position. My grandmother, who is on a fixed income, lives in a building that was recently sold. And within one year, the rent was raised $300 twice, so $600 in one year for a senior citizen on a pension. Um I, my heart bleeds for other people that may be experiencing similar situations.
Thank you. And finally, we'll finish this round of question up with Fernando Vasquez. Fernando, would you take yourself off mute? And would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
The question again is, do you support the adoption of rent control in the city of Montebello?
Okay, yeah, with with the city of Montebello um transforming itself to accommodate the community and the residents, in my opinion, I think you want to bring business and revenue to the city. Most importantly, by doing that, you also would want to provide affordable housing for the people, for anybody coming to Montebello and wanting to live on a fixed income or low income. You know, I think you guys could add that together. You know what will happen if that happens. You know, so I'm not saying it shouldn't cater to a specific group, but I do not approve or I would not want that what you said.
All right. Thank you, Fernando. We're gonna go to the last question before we get to your closing statements. Question number seven. What services or programs will you implement to better serve the youth in the community? And we will start this last question with Byron Jackson. Byron, if you take yourself off mute. What services or programs will you implement to better serve the youth of the community?
Thank you. As a former Parks Commissioner, this is right up my alley. Uh that's, that's all we did. Uh let's try to make new, new events, new programs for the youth. Uh none of that needs to be cut. We need to do more. I tried to bring back our Battle of the Bands, but that just didn't happen. Art programs like art festival, art, art um contest, local youth art contest, something like that. We need, we need to do more, definitely on that. Our budget has just faced many problems, so we couldn't enact those new programs. But yeah, we just need to outreach with our Parks and Rec and and bring the youth into the fold. Thank you.
All right, thank you. David Torres, what services or programs will you implement to better serve the youth of the community?
Thank you. So uh before we help the youth, we need to establish uh the structure to help them. Uh one thing that I've been trying to do and one thing that uh I'm a constant advocate for is establishing a volunteer corps. Uh the first thing that we need are parents and teachers, uh people with free time and retirees that are willing to come out uh and lift up the community, the ones that have that gift to give, that gift of time, uh hopefully funding for donations. Um and once we have that volunteer corps, let's take a look at STEM in the arts. Uh and going back to my own personal experience growing up, the things that I really benefited from were science camps, were leadership courses uh were, or camps, uh when COVID came in and we were taking away all the the summer camp programming. I was asking, I was asking the city, can we do something virtual? Because the the connections that kids make during those times are so formative and so important. Let's teach them how to paint and appreciate music. Let's teach them about rockets and science. Um those, I get excited about this, but those are things that I would like to bring to the city.
All right, same question for Jack Hagenian.
Uh that's, it's obviously, it's important to keep a fully staffed Parks and Recreation Department uh so they can implement these programs to keep the kids um active and off the street. Uh so I've been a big advocate of that. Also, um you know, granted, if you have a healthy economy, it's, it's easy to go and uh raise money uh through private businesses and contractors uh to sponsor these programs because the, you could expand the Parks and Recreation Program. I served for years on the Sheriff's Youth Foundation Board and we've raised millions of dollars through uh private donations. And we have, you know, gyms and other facilities throughout LA County. So I'm very well aware of how this works and what you can do. Um so obviously, a Parks and Recreation Program is important as we have, but you can expand on it by incorporating sponsorship through the private side.
All right, same question for Scarlett Peralta. Scarlett, if you take yourself off mute?
Yes. So, you know, we can do better for our children in Montebello. Many of the families that I have talked to actually go to other cities uh to take their children to uh youth programs there, sports, and any type of uh recreational classes simply because our city does not uh offer them. And you know, many of the reasons is because we don't have the budget. But one of the things that I advocate is creating private and public partnerships to expand these services for our children. I would love to see dance classes, coding and cooking classes. As someone that has a brother at Shore High School, you know, I understand the importance of having outside recreational activities to reinforce uh his education and reinforce, uh help your uh lifestyle, especially at this age. Something that I want to commit myself to doing um when elected is creating a public service academy in which I will work with other local leaders throughout our cities, be able to bring in workshops and classes for um young leaders in Montebello who one day want to serve and teaching them the importance of public service and being civically involved.
Thank you very much. Same question, it goes to Joseph Sanchez. Joseph, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
The question is, what services or programs will you implement to better serve the youth of the community?
What we need to do as a city is work together with our school district. There is such a great divide between the city and our school district. We need to work together. They have, they know the know how to help our children. They work with our children eight hours a day. We need to work together with our school district and maybe help fund an after school band program, like Byron was saying, or an after school football program. We need to stop relying on outside sources, the state, to help us. The city of Montebello could be self sufficient. The city of Montebello could do everything on its own without anyone else if we really, really try to work together. Thank you.
All right, same question for Joella Valdez. Joella, would you like me to repeat the question?
I got it.
Okay.
Number one, mentorship programs. I'm a product of a mentorship program, most mentoring our students through experience. We have a retired resident on 10th Street who worked uh with at risk youth and mentorship programs. And he was telling me the huge decline that they saw in the city that he worked in when implementing mentorship programs. Number two, I spoke with another resident who um gave us an idea of a city supported college um college fair. Uh instead of just come always depending on um the school district to provide resources for our students, let's help get our students on board, college bound. Third, after school pro- uh programs, we have a lot of at risk youth that are latchkey kids. Uh I would love to see programs after school that provide breadth and depth and and knowledge base, um arts and culture. That's something that I think will add to having a well-rounded education. And I think those kids that when they come home and they come home to an empty house with no parents, instead of going home to an empty house with no parents, they should go to an after-school program that provides these types of things.
How about your time there, Joella? Thank you. Same question goes to Fernando Vasquez. Mr. Vasquez, take yourself off mute there. And would you like me to repeat the question?
I know. That's fine. Okay, so what I would do is I would have HR open up like a roll call for applications for mentoring. Open up the city to mentoring. You know, you can have people from Pico Rivera, East Los Angeles, Monterey Park, Alhambra, and, you know, down low. Have these, have students and even grownups apply for a mentorship with any official, any business throughout the whole community, the entirety of the city. Also, survey the city and survey the schools and provide advertisements that would generate what the interest are of people from high school, elementary, or intermediate in this case. And so that we can better work with what the needs are of every young adult.
Thank you, Fernando. I'm there. And finally, on this question, we have Rosie Vasquez. Rosie, would you like me to repeat the question as you take yourself off mute?
Yes, please.
What services or programs will you implement to better serve the youth of the community?
Well, I have a long list. I'll start with acting classes for our youth. I'll start with painting classes for our youth, mariachi classes for our youth, piano classes for our youth. I mean, I can go on and on and on. You know, we have an opportunity in this city to have these wonderful acting classes. We have children that can earn money through the entertainment business in doing simple advertising for McDonald's, for these big corporations. Where are our children? You don't see them doing these type of, you know, ads and commercials. They pay so much money. The other thing I think that we need to look at in all of this is that, yes, we need to work with the school district. I believe that we should have an after-school, you know, homework classes program where the children will come to the cultural center, hopefully, and have someone, a teacher perhaps from the school district to help that child with their homework.
Time limit. Thank you very much. Well, candidates, you've made it through the question portion of the candidates for in this evening. Now it's time for your closing remarks. And you will have one minute for your closing remarks and we'll continue the round robin order before we end here. And we'll start with David Torres. David Torres, your one-minute closing remark.
Thank you again to the chamber and all the volunteers that pulled this together. Mr. Smith, thank you so much for hosting this evening. I think this forum showed a few things. That voters need someone that can answer the questions straight instead of dancing around it. Someone that knows our issues, our resources, can get creative and bring policy ideas forward. And someone that doesn't bring others down to make themselves seem less small. Residents don't deserve that kind of treatment. I'm here for one purpose, and that's to earn the vote of Montebello voters. If anyone watching tonight has any questions that weren't asked here, or if you would like me to describe further what I couldn't explain in one short minute, please reach out to me through my website at davidntorres.com. That's N as in Nicholas. I would be proud to earn your vote. Thank you, Montebello, for joining us this evening.
All right. The closing remarks for one minute for Jack Hagenian.
Thank you to the voters, the residents, business owners, folks that are watching this. It's been a pleasure to serve on the city council and I, you know, I'm a man of my convictions and I stand behind every decision that I've made, programs I've introduced. Being a strong supporter of public safety and our law enforcement is very critical because all good things are only caused by a safe community, a healthy community. I have the experience. I'm pragmatic. I like to rationalize with people. And I continue to consider and take input from people throughout every part of this community. So thank you, Montebello. I respectfully ask for your vote and see you in November.
All right. Closing remark coming from candidate Scarlett Peralta. Scarlett, you have one minute.
Yes. Hi. First, I would like to say thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for organizing this forum for our community. Thank you to all candidates for participating. Montebello is a city that has raised me. I have very deep roots here. Representing my community is a very personal matter and I am very honored to be supported by many community leaders, businesses and residents. It's going to take someone that has a capacity, that can balance interests, can be objective, and someone who will not take credit for everything, but will instead work with colleagues to get things done. I have a proven ability to collaborate, to determine a common ground and develop solutions that will be an asset to our council as we face very crucial decisions. My love for my community is seen throughout the many years of involvement with my neighbors, creating partnerships and always finding opportunities to service those in my community. This November, I humbly ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Your closing remarks from now, Mr. Joseph Sanchez.
Well, folks, I'm here for basically 11 years. I raised my family. I still serve my church. I run my own business. I'm here to help for 11 years, to be a servant for you. Use me. Elect me. My vision for this city is for the benefit of the residents 50 years from now. We need to get started now. We can't wait 50 years from now and then start. If you have any questions for me, like David was saying, one minute's kind of hard, you can email me. I'm on Facebook as well. I'm here to talk to you. Come over. We'll have a hot dog. We'll have a hamburger. We'll talk. I'm here for you. 11 years, then I retire. I got 10 seconds left. So I'm here for you. After that, it ain't my job. I'm not the savior. I'm a servant. I don't save the city. I serve the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. And your closing remarks now from Joella Valdez.
Thank you. Over the next five years, Montebello will see major construction projects. I decided to run for city council because I have the experience needed to make sure that these projects are done right, on time and with the least amount of negative impact on us, the people who live and work here. Because of my clearly defined positions and consistent vision, I've been endorsed by our local police and labor unions, the mayor and other elected officials. They know who I am. And most importantly, I know who I am. In these difficult times, we need leaders who have experience and stability. I've always been someone who has led by example. In my company, when times are tough, I make sacrifices. I have every intention of leading by example in Montebello. When times are tough and before we cut jobs or pay or programs, I will propose cutting council stipends until we can fully recover. Fellow Montebellans, stand with me in pushing this wheel of progress and building a brighter Montebello for all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Closing remarks now from Fernando Vasquez. Fernando, you have one minute. Take yourself off mute, sir. Take yourself off mute. One minute, sir.
Okay, I would like to first start off by saying thank you for having me and I'm glad to see everyone behind those yard signs because I was curious to know who they were. And I'm very happy to meet everyone else. Thank you. I will commit myself to help the city and provide assistance to the city of Montebello's people and community so that all the decisions made by me, along with other city council members, reflect the community of Montebello. I think Montebello is on the road to recovery, but it's going to take every resident living or working in this city to do their parts. I have this printed on my paper. So I have the knowledge and public relations experience. So I'm also a hard worker. You can see that in my professional experience. I'm a trusted public servant and I'm seeking a seat on the Montebello City Council because I want to participate and help the city's perspective. Thank you. Vote for me 2020, November 3rd.
All right. Thank you. Now, closing remarks from Rosie Vasquez. Rosie, please take yourself off mute. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Once again, thank you to the chamber for hosting this forum and to all my fellow candidates for participating. I just want to remind you that I have a long history of advocacy on behalf of the residents of Montebello. I'm a very passionate about the future, they said, very passionate about it. My husband and I, Ed, have invested our lifetime in Montebello. We want to see it succeed and I hope it will grow into the type of community that our grandchildren would like to live in. I believe that I have the skill, the experience and understanding of Montebello to fix our problems and build consensus among our residents that will make us the most prosperous city that we once were. I don't claim to have all the answers and I'm hoping to work with everyone. From now on, you know, we have an opportunity to do great things in this city. And so for all of you, good luck and for our chamber, thank you very much.
Thank you. And now to end the evening, their closing remarks from candidate Byron Jackson.
Okay. Thank you, Scott, Ani and the chamber for having us tonight. Montebello, you have a choice. You finally have a choice now. Do you want the same old, same old, or do you want something new? Same old, same old. You're big-money politicians. Keep voting for the same people, you keep getting the same stuff. You got me now. No money, not a politician, and actually a businessman. Facing the COVID crisis, the budget deficit coming soon, you need somebody who knows how to actually look at contracts and somebody that has the backbone to stand up to these donors. That is me. I've been your voice as a commissioner. I've been your voice on the My Montebello page and I will continue to be a voice as a councilman. Thank you.
Well, thank you to all the candidates this evening. I applaud you for taking the time to run for office. It is not an easy job you seek and it's not easy to get there. So thank you all this evening. I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce. So you have a great Chamber of Commerce in Montebello. Obviously, you see the great leaders here this evening. And I thank you to Ani and the chamber for inviting me back to moderate. Ani, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you so much, Scott. We really appreciate you moderating today's forum. You did, again, a wonderful, wonderful job. You put everybody at ease and we really appreciate you. If you want to find out more about the candidates participating today, on our website, on our homepage, there's blog index and right at the top is going to be our voters' information guide. In that guide, you will find a link that will take you to a page on our website where you'll be able to see all of our candidates. You'll be able to read their biographies, their candidate statements. You'll have links to their social media or their websites. And so you can find out more about everyone here participating as a candidate on our website. I'd like to thank everyone, all the candidates for participating tonight. I think it's really important in furthering the democratic process to have everyone's full participation and we had that tonight. And we're very grateful for you putting yourself out there so that the voters can have a chance to get to know you better, especially in this time of isolation and social distancing. We applaud your courage and commitment in running for office. It's not an easy thing to do and we wish you luck with all of your campaigns. Thank you again for our event sponsors, Alton Services and SoCal Gas and our Government Affairs Committee, especially our timekeepers. They've been so relentless and tireless, so we appreciate you. But thank you to all of you at home who are joining us tonight and watching from your homes. Don't forget to vote on November 3rd. And we also look forward to seeing you next week, right here on our Facebook channel, on October 15th at 1:00 PM as we livestream the State of the City Address by Mayor Salvador Melendez. And with that, I will bid you good night. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
We're gonna let everybody see you. Everyone wave. Hey, goodbye, good night.